Twenty-nine and thirty, what those projected for residential occupancies. So, just to clarify. Any questions about that?
Do we have an average value of those new builds?
Some of them we do, some of them we don't at this point.
Okay.
So, take this further. I don't know if we can make this leap here. Do you recall what the total annual splosh generated is in Camden County?
Roughly twelve point eight, off the top of my head.
You mean to what the floss would be?
No, just what the current splosh.
For Camden County as a whole.
Right.
It would be roughly twelve point eight.
So, that's one percent of sales taxes generating twelve point eight. And one percent of these taxes from tourism is roughly a little over two million dollars.
Correct.
So, then about, what's that, twenty, not quite twenty percent of eighteen percent and seventeen percent theoretically coming from tourism out of that total twelve.
Yes, sir.
So, it's not nothing. Okay.
Christine Adamo, nine oh one N here in St. Mary's. Many of the taxpayers that are sitting here were not at the retreat and didn't have the benefit of the PowerPoint video that you all had. Several of the people that I've just spoken to are here for getting a better understanding of what opting out on this bill really means. The data that we just very quickly saw, very small numbers, but very large numbers, I think would be good to explain to those of us sitting here that if we are opting out of this tax, there will ultimately be a shortfall for the city from not deriving the benefit of that income from that tax. What does that look like and where will we get that shortfall? But before you talk to that, could you explain kind of the gist for those of us that didn't see that presentation? Thank you.
Okay. So, actually, if I'm not mistaken, the opting out is kind of the opposite effect. Opting out, so our legislature, state legislature passed House Bill 581. It's got three main parts. The first is a homestead exemption for the cities that they basically, you know, put it in place with the law. So, we currently, if you live here in St. Mary's, you currently have a county homestead exemption for your county taxes where your property value is fixed once you request that homestead exemption. And your county taxes are from then forward, as long as you make no major improvements to your house or you don't sell your house, your value of your house is always taxed at that homesteaded price moving forward. The city of St. Mary's does not currently have a fixed exemption like that. And so, your appraised value goes up year over year as the market changes and your taxes are based off of that higher appraised value, not, it's not fixed at, like the county value is. So, opting out of this program would basically keep that situation in place. Now, one of the things that the legislature put into place was the possibility of a floss. So, if you opted in and you got a homestead exemption at the city level, then your values would be fixed and the digest would not continue to grow as quickly over time because more of the values are fixed by the homesteaders, that you would not see our millage rates going down as they have over the last several years. You know, we just went from six point two to five point four three nine, something like that. So, you know, dropped, pretty good drop there on our millage rate. And that drop gave the city the same exact amount of money to operate on this year as it had the year before, basically. That's what that rollback rate did. What would happen over time, like I said, is that millage rate would not drop as quickly. So, they allowed for this possibility of a floss, a floating local option sales tax, which can only happen if all of the taxing authorities in the county have a fixed homestead exemption. County already has one, so they apply whether they opt in or opt out of this particular program. But City Woodbine, the City of Kingsland, and the City of St. Mary's would all have to opt in or we are denied the possibility of having this floating local option sales tax. What that floating local option sales tax or floss would have done would have been a dollar-for-dollar reduction in your millage rate. So, whatever we collect in sales tax there, and it wouldn't have to necessarily be one percent, it could be five tenths of a percent in increments of five tenths. So, you could have point one five or point two five or point five oh sales tax. But whatever money was collected through that floss, of which we just talked about, roughly twenty percent maybe is coming from outside money, would go back into reducing your millage rate. So, it would drop everybody's millage rate all the way across the board, not only homesteaded properties, but small businesses, apartment complexes, retail, commercial, you know, everybody's millage rate would be going down as a result of this floss. So, but that is not going to be an option if the other municipalities, which have indicated that's the way they're heading. And so, in order for us to consider this possibility and to have these conversations tonight, we had to begin the opt-out process because a decision has to be made to the Secretary of State by March the first. So, in order to do it, we have to have three public hearings and then we have to make the final decision whether we're opting in or opting out. And so, to hear everyone's voice, we wanted to go ahead and start the opt-out process to give us a chance to hear from the public and answer any questions and try to decide where we should go as a community. So, the other part of the law has to do with the way taxes are collected and some administrative things really doesn't have any direct bearing on us as taxpayers. But the floating homestead exemption is actually not fixed like the counties is. It would actually vary based on the Consumer Price Index each year. So, potentially it could still go up, you know, one or two, three percent, whatever inflation is for that particular year. So, it's not completely fixed, but it would float and go up probably over time some with inflation.
I'd like to add to what you've said, and that is that just if we back up to the very beginning, the House bill was designed with the idea of giving people who own a home and have filed for the homestead exemption, a predictable increase in value on their home, which is limited to CPI for the prior, the previous year. So that if you're in a market where, you know, there are some sales that are really high right next door to you, or there are a few properties that could be used to increase your assessed value, if we opt into this, you would be, your assessed value increase would be limited to the Consumer Price Index for the previous year. And Greg is correct in saying as the legislation is written right now, we would not be able to assess the floating local option sales tax unless all of the municipalities in Camden County opt in. But there is some appetite, as we learned at our city summit last week in the legislature, for possibly changing that. And there is also a current proposal that would change our deadline date from March first to May first. Now, this was...
Did not pass.
It did not pass? It has not passed or it did not pass?
Did not pass the House.
Okay. All right. So, we still have to make the decision by March first. I mean, yeah, March first. The other thing I wanted to add was that our, the City of Kingsland and also the City of St. Mary's financial departments did an analysis using the past five years, and we talked about this at the last meeting, but just for your information, using our assessed value for homesteaded properties for the past five years and capping that at the, you know, capping the increase year to year by the previous year's CPI, we would lose in round numbers about three hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue if we were not able to implement the floating local option sales tax to replace the capped assessed values.
So, I mean, ultimately what that means is millage rates would need to go up or at least not be falling as you've seen over the last few years or whatever, in order to maintain.
I think that they both did a great job of explaining this. And, you know, I've learned that, you know, if you get two or three people saying about the same thing in their own way, it might help resonate because I saw some confused faces on that. So, what's important, I believe, is that, yes, we all want to save money on taxes. I get that. But what this is not proposed as a reduction of overall taxes collected by the city. It is just giving you a break in this area to make up for it somewhere else, and that would be the local option sales tax. It does have its benefits. Now, if another municipality does opt out, say Kingsland opts out, then we don't have that option to collect the local option sales tax the way that it's reported to the state with each county. So, that wouldn't be an option. So, just kind of what he just said was that the only way to make up for that difference of the three hundred and, say, thousand that we give on a tax break over here, we would have to make up for it somewhere else. And if we don't have the option of the sales tax, that would be in the millage rate. So, we'd be, in theory, you know, giving a break on property taxes with the homestead but having to make up for it by raising the property taxes. So, then there wouldn't seem to be a tangible benefit to opt in to a, I like to call it a pilot program right now, even though it's going to be something that, you know, their positioning is here to stay, it's going to make changes. You know, it's a large, it's a large shifting of the way we collect their taxes and it's dang near impossible to get it right the first time. And I would like to use the example of the House Bill ninety-two just changing the opt-in date or opt-out date to March first, or sorry, to May first. And I hope they do that to give us more time and the other cities in the county more time to see if that's truly the right thing to do at this time. If they keep it at March first, I'm almost positive based off conversations I've personally had, you know, with some representatives in Kingsland, that, you know, March first, that there would be a hard opt-out. But they would like that time as well to take their time to see if we should opt in or not and be in the middle of something where, you know, ultimately we're getting to the same end result with the same amount of money that's collected, but without the local option sales tax, we're getting it from the same place within property taxes. So, it just wouldn't make sense to go through that change right now unless there's a better benefit or we can redistribute it a different way so it makes a little more sense. That's kind of the way I'm at, where I've gotten at on it so far. And then the other thing is that I know the state really wants it and it passed in the ballot referendum by a pretty good margin as far as being able to have the option to do it. So, I think that's important is why people may have voted yes for it. Were they voting yes for it because they read it and they understood it and they just said, yes, I want this? Or did they just vote yes? You know, I've talked to a couple of people. I voted yes because it was an option. It just gave us the option to opt in or opt out. At the time of voting in November, I voted yes because it wasn't voting yes to implement it, it was voting yes to have the option to learn more about it. I had talked to someone else who voted no because they didn't understand it. So, they're, you know, I didn't understand it, I voted no. And then I've talked to other people who didn't vote at all on it because they didn't understand it all at the time of voting. So, I really don't know, it's kind of hard to fully understand the intent of why someone might have voted yes or not for it, but I don't think it was an overwhelming intent to approve it at that time that, you know, because, you know, like I said, I voted yes, but it was because I knew that it wasn't a hard, we're doing this, it just gives us the option to do it if we think it's a good idea when this time comes, which is now.
Good, Mr. Canning.
Tom Canning, four ten point Peter Place. Confused as...
Yeah, clear as mud.
Okay. I need to ask some one-liners because I'm, some of the answers, I got partial answers on. Number one, I thought I read somewhere that at a county level in the three municipality law, too, because I guess Woodbine isn't really a player in this, is that right? It's just St. Mary's, Kingsland, and the county.
No, the county does property taxes, so they are a player.
No, I said Woodbine, the city of...
Yeah, Woodbine, I mean, yes.
They're out of the, they're out of this scenario, is that correct?
No, sir. They are a taxing authority. They assess property taxes.
The other one you didn't mention, and I think is equally in, is the school board.
That doesn't impact our ability to levy the, or put the floss for a referendum.
Okay. So, that brings me to my first question. I thought I read that at a county level, all the players had to be either in or out. Now, you just said that we don't care about what the school board says, they're not going to impact the consequence to the city. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So, they all have to be in, they all have to adopt the exemption in order to have the possibility of having a referendum for the sales tax. So, it's still, the sales tax would still have to go out to the public and be voted on probably in November if it was to happen.
Now, you're talking about sales tax, are you talking about floss?
I'm talking about the floss, right. Floating local option. But everyone would have to opt in in order to have the possibility of the floss.
Except the school board.
Except for the school system.
Except for the school system.
Yes.
Okay. Because God only knows what they're going to do.
But not everybody has to opt out. Some could opt in, some could opt out, but we just would not have the option of the floss unless everyone opted in.
Okay. Let's assume for the second, for a moment, for this question, that everybody opted in. Doesn't sound like it, but let's, St. Mary's along with the other cities have a homestead exemption right now. That homestead exemption has an age requirement. This new one does not, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, if the new one, if we opted in and put to the new homestead exemption, what would happen to the old, the existing homestead exemption? Would that go away?
It wouldn't go away. Anything that's in place right now, you get the better of either the House Bill five eighty-one or what exists.
So, there'd be two homestead exemption projects, and whatever I as an individual benefits the most, that's the one that would impact my taxes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Age limit. Okay. Now, when we started talking about this in the beginning, what really threw me off was we were talking about the homestead exemption, but we started getting numbers about the various splosh, lost, e-splosh. Those are other money revenues, right? And you were trying to make us aware that that's part of helping us pay the bills as well, but it has nothing to do with the homestead exemption.
Well, let me explain how it's relevant. We have been told that the floating local option sales tax is most likely to mimic lost, the local option sales tax.
Which is one percent on every...
Yes. If it were voted in, and so that's why we wanted information about what percentage of that came from people that live outside of Camden County. Because as we pointed out, this is shifting the burden from homeowners, homesteaded homeowners to a consumption tax because either we do that or we're, and if we do that, we can use a consumption tax to offset, we're required by law to use it to offset the millage rate. But I just lost my train of thought because that's how this bill is, I'll tell you. We understand that you're confused because we've spent days studying it.
Last question I promise, okay? If the City of St. Mary's opts in and the other organizations, governments do not, then the result would be we would have two programs with homestead exemption applicable to St. Mary's and we would not be able to exercise the floss revenue stream.
Correct.
Is that the...
And because of the CPI cap, we would more than likely, we've estimated with projections using the last five years, lose about three hundred thousand dollars in revenue.
You see it as losing, I see it as not paying. Okay?
Well, I mean, it's money that the city uses.
Miss Canning, was that it, for the homeowner, it's an attractive thing on the surface. I'm a homeowner, you know, and I also, as I said at the last meeting, I have a property in close proximity to some of the really high dollar sales that have occurred over the last six months or so. And I'm personally worried about what the appraiser could do, assessor could do with the value of my property because of my proximity there. So, it makes a lot of sense for me to want to lock my exemption. But the other thing that this does is it does further benefit the homeowner to the detriment of everyone else, to the small businesses, to the renter that typically can't afford a homestead, you know, a home and a homestead. You know, their property taxes are going up, their rents are going up, and does it also make us less competitive in a business world because we have higher property taxes than our, you know, Kingsland or some other city might have because they didn't opt in and it's not artificially, you know, increased their property taxes for those businesses and the other half of the non-homesteaded taxpayers? And so, that's, that's the moral decision you make when you sit up here, you know. When you're out there and you're a homeowner, it's pretty cut and dried, yeah, I don't want to pay extra taxes.
Yeah, I understand. It's more than a flip of a coin, but somebody's going to win and somebody's going to lose, whatever the decision's going, lose, pay more or pay less. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Beverly Seifers, two oh six West Bryant Street. So, Mr. Mayor, I understood you said we wanted to start the opt-out process. So, the other municipalities, maybe they're doing the same thing, I don't know.
Yeah.
But we're at February three and we've got until March one. So, everybody's, this is the way it seems to me, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, everybody's waiting on the other person, the other municipality to make the decision. And who, I mean, so we don't know by the last meeting who are the, this is the first of three, correct?
Second.
Second of three, okay. So, when do you make that call as far as totally opting in, opting out?
Right. Well, conversation with Kingsland previously, you know, with a couple of different members over there indicated their desire or their compunction to opt out. And so, you know, we started this process just to give us the option, you know, of either way. And, you know, whether or not they changed their minds, but their initial was not just an exploratory process where I think we more were, they were more, you know, opting out. They had even sent a, you know, a letter with a number of bullet points and questions to the state representative and senator to, you know, here's our concerns about this and the Navy family who's, you know, because whenever our house changes hands, it gets reassessed and the values go up. And you can have two houses built next door to each other in a neighborhood and this person stays there for twenty, thirty years, the next house changes hands every two, three years, and now this person's paying twice as much in city taxes as their neighbor for the exact same house. So, that's what occurs, you know, over time with these, these homestead exemptions potentially. And that was one of their, you know, one of their arguments, if you will. And, you know, we don't know whether they'll change their mind if they, I know they had nobody show up at their first, at their first meeting. So, I don't know, you know, what's happened since then, but, you know, we're definitely going to talk to them. But like I said, the other side of it is even if we opt in, we still have to vote to whether we want to do the floss or not. Do we want to add another, another sales tax that potentially that sales tax would lower our millage rates, you know, dollar for dollar? So, and it would apply equitably to everyone. Everyone's millage rates would go down, not just homesteaded.
And this is the first of three, by the way, not the second. This is the first, the second is on the twelfth and the third is on the eighteenth.
That's right. I guess we talked about it that night.
So, then as far as the council then, the decision would be made after the third meeting?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Because then we have to prepare a proclamation and get it to the Secretary of State by March one if we're going to opt out. If you do nothing, you're automatically opting in.
Okay. And we as citizens, how do we find out about that?
We will have a call meeting...
We'll probably have a work session.
There will be, there'll be a special call meeting following the eighteenth meeting, which is at six, I believe? Yes, February the eighteenth at six P.M. Will be the same scenario that we have right now. Following that, there will be a special call council meeting for the council to vote on. And we'll do normal advertisement on that and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Brumelow, eight oh five Riverview Drive West. Okay, the state legislature passed this bill and why did they pass it? They passed it because assessed values all across Georgia have been skyrocketing. And so, they go, okay, for people, cities like St. Mary's that don't have a homestead exemption like the county does, we're going to give them an option to do that. And they seem to be surprised that a lot of people aren't taking advantage of that. But the, you, we've reduced our millage rates through the past few years. My city taxes have gone up eighty percent in four years and are projected to go up twenty percent more next year. That's an exponential increase as opposed to a CPI increase. So, anyone that owns a home, just like Mayor said, and doesn't want to opt into this is like, okay, you're going to be spending a lot more in taxes, especially if values keep going up over the next five years like they have. And I understand that the people in the House said that if cities aren't smart enough to opt in and protect their taxpayers, we'll come back with another piece of legislation that will force the homestead exemption on them. So, why will we wait to have it forced on us when we have the option here? And to me, it's a no-brainer. I read all the bullet points from Kingsland and I've listened to all the reasons that we might lose revenue, and all of those reasons are excuses not to opt in. And if you do have a revenue issue, raise the millage rate. And you were voted on up here to do two things, keep us safe and all that stuff like that, and also protect our money. So, I don't want to pay a twenty percent increase in property taxes for the next five years. And if you opt out, that's what we're going to be doing. So, I'm one hundred percent for opting in and not opting out.
Thank you.
Bert Seals, eight one six Riverview Drive. I'm glad he came and spoke on that because I was going to say the same thing. One of the few things that we, you know, we're talking about Kingsland and Woodbine. I don't count Woodbine as a city. That's me personally. So, you know, I want to get that clear, you know. Kingsland, you know, they have more businesses because they have, you know, they have a situation where they could, you know, people don't even go to their meetings, you know what I mean? Because I read, I read in the Tribune and some of the stuff where those folks don't show up because they don't... Because, you know, you know what? They know they have a bunch of businesses, so they get that revenue from the business. Here in St. Mary's, we're still growing. I'm looking forward to exit 1, kind of getting in there and things start happening. We start to have some business up in here, you know, and I will kind of hopefully take care of some of the millage and the FLOST and the lost and all the different things. Right now, as homeowners, you know, we're trying our best to like not get our taxes raised. And the bottom line is with this 581, you know, they're playing with it. You know, the folks up at the state are saying one thing, and, you know, it's feeding down, and we need to show what's going on. And, you know, I read upon it, and I voted yes, because I figured, ain't going to get a tax break, great. You know what I mean? I don't care, you look at it, the property value going to go up. If it ain't going up, you're going to be living in a shanty town. And we in St. Mary's, we're another shanty town city. You know, we're going to grow. So we need, me personally, we need to opt into it and take our chances. Because however you look at it, you know, you're at 20% down the road, Kingsland, I'm sorry for them, you know what I mean? I back up, I shouldn't say I'm sorry for them. They are doing what they're doing, and nobody ain't going to the meetings. So that tells me a whole lot. One of the key things is the people voted this thing in. Some folks checked it out, and they were, they were aware of what was going on. And all this sound and dance going on here, y'all blow my mind big time. You know what I mean? I know some of you guys wasn't here, Mayor, Jeremy, and Ms. Keen, you guys weren't here. We had the other folks that were here. So I'm looking for them to say something. Now, I know you brought it up, Chad, you brought it up, and you mentioned, well, Kingsland, I'm going like, you using Kingsland? You know what I mean? And, you know, they have serious business there. They have, and that, they cover, they cover their tax base, but the business action they have, we don't. We don't have that. We struggling. You know, if you don't know that, well, you know that. Now, I'm telling you, we struggling, you know? And homestead, I ain't going to say no more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've got just a couple more minutes. Is there anyone else?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Ken Jolly, 1002 South Goss Strait, St. Mary's, Georgia. And certainly on the surface, this is a bill that appears to be something that most everyone would be in favor of. The only thing I would like to suggest to all of the individuals in our good city is to get a copy of the 14 pages of what this bill really is, soup to nuts, from the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia and the Georgia Municipal Association. It leads off with a few words. This bill provides for several significant changes. This bill impacts local government revenue. That's the money the city of St. Mary's gets. If they don't get it, it's going to come out of your pocket one way or the other. Cities must understand these changes and be prepared to make what is considered critical decisions. And these decisions will have lasting impacts. So while on the surface it may be nice to say my property taxes are going to go down, the city of St. Mary's is going to make that money up one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
I don't think there's anybody that's studied this probably as much as me. I've gone to about 25, maybe 30 different cities, and I've changed my mind about 25 or 30 different times as to whether it's a good thing or a bad thing for St. Mary's. And have you heard the statement, "I'm the government and I'm here to help"? That's what this bill kind of reminded me of. And I believe less government is better government. And I'm going with the format that's going to be least invasive by the state, where the city of St. Mary's have more control.
Anyone else? All right, we'll close this public hearing, and we will reconvene in a few minutes at 5:45 for a public hearing on alcohol.